Call the town of Oliver Springs Water Board meeting to order for Thursday, May the first. Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Becky Vanhoog.
Yes.
Becky Vanhoog.
Yes.
I think he passed four dash oh dash two.
Yes.
House of money, yes. Had a fight back there somewhere. It's okay. It's okay. Well, can you get that one, Joe?
Yes, it is, Robert.
So at this time, is there any citizen who'd like to come and address our board if so? And come forward, state your name.
My name is Lager Kelly. I live at 533 First Noe Lane. And I've lived in six different counties. Oliver Springs is the worst one I've ever been into on the water bill. So it's the highest I've ever paid on all three. And I made a phone call about two months ago. I guess we have a new sheriff in town, a new person in charge of the water. Pardon? Lady.
Ms. Deborah.
Yeah. Well, she needs to figure out how to treat people only they talk to people on the phone and not talk to them like they're three years old. My water got turned off the other day because I forgot to pay it last month. I've got a memory problem, but anyway. When they turn the water off on the day that you get your bill, before you get your bill, ain't that like kind of trying to get money out of people?
That I don't know. But usually when there's, you get your bill in the, what is it, Robert? Fifteen days?
Four days.
Fifteen to seven days?
On the 28th. They turned it off on the 28th.
So was that that month or the previous month?
Previous month.
So you were a month behind?
Right.
So they actually gave you?
I guess I got paid.
Yeah.
I got my memory, the best in the world. I had a lot of stuff happen with that's and I hear and there. But if I knew it would have been late, I would have paid it, just like I did. I would have paid it.
Mm-hmm.
Because I got a bill on the 28th, but they turned it off on the 28th. So how in the heck does a person need to know that he's going to be late? But what she told me on the phone was when I'm the new person in town, it's going to be my way or no way, and it's going to be turned off on the 30th if you're late. How am I going to know it's on the 30th if I don't get the bill until the 30th or the 28th? I got it on Tuesday, which is the 28th, and that's the day they turned it off.
So were you already one month delinquent?
No, because I come and paid in February.
And they did this in March?
They just did it the other day. I was a month behind.
So you paid your bill in February. Did you pay your bill in March?
No, that's the one I missed.
Right.
Okay, so you were delinquent.
Correct.
Correct?
You were 30 days.
I didn't know I was delinquent. I didn't know I didn't pay the last month's bill.
But you didn't.
Right.
Okay, so.
So how was I supposed to know that? Because there's no way you can go online and look and see if your water bill, how much you owe or anything unless you put in how much you're going to pay and all this stuff. You know, every other utility board, the gas company, they all got apps. We're hung in the 1960s, and nobody knows what's going on. I paid my bill, got my water turned back on. I asked her what the total was, and all she can give me on a receipt was how much I paid. Then she said, well, you owe this much money. Okay, now you pay that.
Is that the program, Corey, we just paid for and not working yet? So you're probably about three weeks out from having the email bill instead of?
That's another thing. That's what she said, email. That's in 2000. We're in 2020. Text messages. Everybody has a cellphone.
Yeah.
Not everybody has an email. I've got one, but not everybody's going to have an email. Almost 90% of people have a cellphone.
Right.
Wouldn't it be smarter? Or are we still stuck in 2020 or 2000 when email was a big thing?
So one thing we.
Everything was way behind. Everything needs to get called up. If you don't know how to do it, go ask another utility company.
So we'll add, we are upgrading the phone system now, so when you do have the liquid bill accounts go out, we're able to send like a bulk text out to everybody on that account since spending, you know, 10 hours a day, you know, having, you know, a courtesy call at work. So that's probably about two months out from having that set up.
But it'll be text messages then?
Yeah, it'll be text messages.
Okay. What about the water quality? I've had to replace refrigerators, shower heads, everything. I mean, I've had four people come out and test my water because I thought the first one was just trying to sell me something.
Sure.
Then I called another one. Now I'm like, well, let's try third one. Then I had a good friend of mine, which is from Florida, he came up because his family knew I passed away, come to my house because he does this in Florida. He tested it. He told me not to drink it.
What did you test? What were they testing?
Like 20 different things. Hardness, this, I mean, I don't remember exactly because I don't have it all wrote down, but the hardness, he said in Florida is like 12 to 13. He says it's hardest water ever because they don't, there's no water like here. Mine was 15. Four different people told me it's 15. So four people was wrong?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Joe.
Some of the things I'm going to say you won't want to hear, but I think it will show you some answers to your questions. Number one, the law presumes if you have a service that you don't have to pay for it, you may forget that, and I understand you don't pay unless you get a bill. But at the same time, our water department has experienced a situation where we mailed the bills in timely fashion, but the post office is delaying in delivering them. And if we put the mail, the bill in the mail 15 days or 10 days or 20 days before it's due, and you get it the day it's due, at that point, that's beyond our control. Now, I have run into situations where I've mailed stuff to Atlanta, Georgia by first class mail. It takes two weeks to get there. So part of this problem that you're complaining of is this systemic problem that's beyond the control of anybody in this room. Now, the second thing is you asked why we're not on the computer system. I've been down here since 1985. My father was chairman of the water board from 1965 to 1975 where I grew up, and so I'm intimately familiar with the water system. And yes, it'd be nice to be on computers, but we have choices of spending money on computers or spending money on losing water through water lines that were put in in the 30s during the Roseville administration. And when TDEC, which is the state agency that regulates our water department, comes in and says, we've got to do something about the water loss and loss, then our resources are devoted in that area. Now, I also have practiced law for 45 years, and there are some counties that have a lot of their legal stuff on computer. There are some counties that do not. Why? Economics. So part of this is the fact that we're a smaller system, and we do not have the revenue to do everything to make the system the most perfect system known to man. Now, as far as the water, most of our water comes out of Bacon Springs, and TBA has studied that springs for many years, and they don't know where it comes from. But that water is cleaner than what's in the French Broad River. Our water does have, I think, something like a chloride, a calcium stuff in it that when you get, when you heat it up like a water heater, you will have a crusty type of precipitate that gubs up your electric coils in the water heater, and it can clog the heads and whatnot like that. So yeah, that's just a systemic problem because we get water out of, for the most part, out of a spring, and the other utilities get it out of the river. I personally prefer water out of the spring, comes out of the ground, because we don't know what goes in the river, all the chemicals from the industrial plants and so on and so on like that. As far as the quality of our water, our water's tested, and it's always tested superior in quality. Now, our water department manager can tell you specifically, and from my standpoint, I would want to see in writing, signed by qualified people, the findings that you are representing to us, and let us look at that. Because, you know, we have no way to know exactly who, what, when, where, and why the testing occurred and what they found without seeing the documentation. In addition, we have no way to control the water system in your house from the meter to the speaking. What is in your pipes that we don't?
Brand new, right?
Yeah. See, so there's just a lot of unanswered questions, and you're raising a lot of good points. We're going to have an election in a year and a half. If you're not happy, run for an office, and you can be on the water board, and you can solve all these problems for us.
And to couple off what Joe says, you know, obviously I own a small business, right? And if I want to make a change, I make a change really quick. Our utility is a government on utility. Governments are designed minus what President Trump is currently doing, which is a massive overhaul where he's flooding the system. Government is designed to be slow. When I became mayor, he became city manager, and most of the members on this board were elected, we inherited a horrible, horrible, horrible financial situation. I mean, awful. And you're right, I mean, 1960s, 1970s, and we're eating the elephant one bite at a time. But Joe was correct. The quality of the water that comes out of the spring is one of the highest in the entire state. Now, it does have a high calcium content. It does clog things up. It just does. Is that not right, Teddy? So, you know, now, with that being said, I mean, we're not perfect. We are, we work diligent on getting better and better all the time. And, you know, just like when we are now calling customers when they do have late fees or late bills, so their water isn't cut off, and that number, phone numbers continues to grow month by month by month, and so situations like this can be avoided. But again, I mean, this, you know, we're one of the smallest utilities in the state.
I understand that.
And.
Going back to his comment about the money part of it, the management part of it. So the girl telling me it takes two people to drive around and turn a water meter off, and then two people to drive back around and turn it on? I managed a business for like 20 years before I got sick, and that is bad management. You're putting two people in a vehicle to drive around and turn off water? I'm having to pay two people's salary to drive around and turn water meters off. How smart is that?
I'll say this, I'll say this, again, as a small business owner, I don't allow my guys ever, ever to work solo. I'm the only guy who's allowed to work solo with my crew.
You have a dangerous job.
I do.
You have a dangerous job.
But.
Turning a water meter off is not a dangerous job.
Well, just, I'll say this. I'll say this. Whenever I, whenever we had our snow events, I always thought it was silly that two people rode in a plow truck until I did it. And then I realized, like, this is the dumbest thing I have done in a long time. And then I called somebody, and I'm like, will you please ride with me? But can't.
That's, you're referring to something that is dangerous, riding in a snow pile. I worked for the state for almost 15 years.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer his question. When you go to turn off somebody's water meter and there's only one city employee there, we've experienced in the past accusations that our employee was rude or ugly and cursive and argumentative and just a bad person in general and didn't deserve to breathe the air that the good Lord put her on this earth. So when you have two, you have a witness. Now, you're exactly right, that's expensive, but it's also called covering all the bases when the customer gets angry and from our standpoint abuses our employee. Now, I'm not saying you as a customer got angry and so on. I'm just simply saying that when we send somebody else to cut off somebody's water, they get angry, and they can say a lot of things that they might not have said. And so we have two people there as witnesses. Is that good? Is that expensive? Yes. Is that good financial management? No. Is that good overall employee management? Yes. Yes.
I've got something that you've actually pulled two worker bees off the road to go pull a meter. Now you've got the one guy waiting for the other guy to come back. What is the statistics this month about how many meters we had to pull?
I believe it was close to 110.
This is what, the fifth month they've pulled meters that the same worker bees had to pull all these meters monthly? You got sucked in the, you're thinking a different thing, but it's usually, how many people was repeat people?
Majority, there's a lot.
So the majority of the same people?
Going back to the same thing about bad management. He's saying all of the people are screaming yelling. What about when they drive around to read the meters? Why does it take two people? Because the other day, he went by my house, and I thought, that's kind of weird, so I could have walked out because I stayed home all the time. He backs up, goes by my house again, backs up. He drives down past the next road, backs up. And I know that he was there, there was two of them in there. One was looking at the little iPad. When the last time I come to pay on a deal, she said, oh, I asked her that same question because they dated the month before that at 6:00 in the afternoon. So not only are we paying two people, we're paying overtime because they're at 6:00 in the afternoon. Bad management.
Well, that's not always true because I have done that for free, and Corey has done that for free too. So, I mean, there's a lot that people don't see, like, and I respect.
I understand that, but I know them two people in that city truck is working for free reading meters. And it keeps driving on, she said, well, we had a glitch in their iPad.
Well, it is Bluetooth technology, and Bluetooth technology isn't imperfect. It's not perfect. So, and we can sit here and debate this on a daily.
Really, I follow that one.
You know, and I think we've been respectful, you've been respectful, and all I can tell you is we're trying, you know? It's not like, you know.
The reason I came to that, the biggest reason was plain Nazi is just not cool to me. When I, when I call on the phone about a problem, like I forgot my water bill, and she tells me I'm the new mayor or I'm the new person in charge, and it's going to be my way or no way, come on now.
She actually said those words to you?
She.
Are you quoting her?
I am trying to remember what she said, but I have, like I said, a memory problem. So what I was told was, she's a new person in town. It's going to be my way or no way. It's going to be, I'm, if you're not paid by the so many days after, 15 days, I don't know, 15 or 17 days after the fact, you're late, your bill's going to be turned off.
Remember that our water department employee that you're talking about has rules and regulations that this body has passed, that TDEC has required, and when you say my way of the highway, I don't think it's her highway. I think it's the highway that's dictated by TDEC, by the financing people that finance our water and sewer and the water board. So all she is doing is she is being the conduit by which the information about the procedure is being communicated to you. She doesn't make decisions. She reads the manual and implements the decisions.
So it says in the manual, I'm the new person in charge, and I'm going to, it's going to be my way or no way or the highway?
Well.
Does that say that?
I have learned, I have learned that it's easy to make these type of statements if the other person is not present. I get you.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Governor.
Anybody else? Might speak. Mayor, I will defer to Mr. Jenkins.
Our water plant, no violations for April. Being the first, state reports have not been submitted yet. Those usually are submitted, usually it gets six days after the end of next month. Project submission, RTU, has been installed at the water plant by R&amp;W contractors. The only thing we like is setting up the graphing and the historical monitoring on that, but all the hardware has been installed. Spring levels are still normal, still pumping out about 800 gallons a minute. Upcoming items, 2024 CCR, Consumer Confidence Report. We'll probably get that sent out next week, probably first of next week, along with, we talked about the last meeting, about the emergency operating plant, going through, finishing up the contact information there. Distribution system, if you're still hovering around 53% water loss, your sales are up to 7.2. So in March, your sales were 7.1 million gallons, they were up to 7.2. So we're still off probably 1.5 to 2.5 million gallons. We should be averaging around 9.5 million in sales. The new camstruck meters, again, 2,206 meters are active now. That's all you're having, it's three quarters meters have been installed. I think we still like two two-inch meters, and then everything will be updated. Still, still have the two collector sites, Cove Road Tank and the tower above Richards Tank. We currently have 730 meters that are reading the AMI, which we can pull the live data from the office. Sewer plant, no violations in April, and again, no overflows in April as well. So a lot of the sewer rehab project is ongoing. You're starting to see some results from that. Talking about that sewer rehab project, the past two weeks, they've been working on services on Foxwoods Circle. They still have to come back. I know we had a couple of customer complaints about the yards being messed up. Went out and talked with them, met with them, spoke with the contractor. Once it rains, kind of where they're dug up, we'll come back and rest those up. But I did contact the contractor about those. The only thing remaining is the 14 manholes, and they're going to start working on Thursdays and Fridays, I believe, on rehabbing the manholes. Other than that, that project will be wrapped up. T-Daw Bridge replacement project on 61, the utility line install is complete. I do have one thing that I need to bring up. During the design of that project, there was a sewer line that runs across whatever that creek is, and it was outside the scope of the project. So T-Daw will cover it, so we're going to be left with that bill. So you currently have a four-inch PVC line that's draped across the creek with no carrier pipe or anything. That bid, I think, was right at $46,000, and that's something that we'll have to pay for that, and it's something that we need to go ahead and do. Just because environmental's already been done on the project, engineers done on this project, if we have to circle back around and redo everything, you're probably about $100,000 project. So we can get out of that now, probably have that board done next week if we do agree to that tonight. And that would be the only bid with the existing contractor, outboring contractor, $46,000. So that'd be one thing we do need action on tonight.
Was that requirement resulting from the new highway?
So it's all, yeah, it is for the T-Daw bridge above. When they designed this project, that was considered to be outside the scope of the project, so T-Daw would not cover.
But now it's inside the scope of the project?
No, it's still outside. I mean, once they designated that outside the project.
Why don't we got to fix it if it's outside the project?
So it's not torn up. It's not, it's not torn up. You've got a huge liability of a four-inch PVC sewer force main draped across the creek. And I mean, that's just.
It was when it was installed, if I'm not mistaken, it was laying on the bed of the creek. And now, 15 years later, there's about two foot under it, and it's suspended in the creek, so theoretically, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, something comes down the creek and hits it, breaks it.
Where up the creek?
Where up the creek.
You got to use line building.
You have to use tower down.
So it's a force lane from Grand Oak?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
Woodcutters and.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you mean by carrier pipe?
So we can't put a casing over it? It's going to be under the water?
It's draped literally across the creek, creek running under it. It's actually got logs and debris pushed up against it right now, and there's probably about 200-foot section that will have to be replaced.
One good tree is supposed to stand.
Oh, it's.
What did it, you said carrier pipe?
So a carrier pipe, if you've got a four-inch pipe, you've got to have an eight-inch carrier pipe to go, so an eight-inch doug-liner pipe, HDB, whatever you want to use with the four-inch force main going through it.
Well, have the same grade, just have a sheath around it.
Yeah, you're probably going to upsize it anyway. It's a four-inch right now, so we're going to pay to, to have it bored. We're going to put a six-inch in just to prepare for any type of like, any growth in that area.
Well, at least the pipe you told them then.
It's going to be right at 200 foot.
So they just want to relocate it, they're just going to bury it?
Yeah, they're going to board, yeah.
That's all they're going to do.
Yeah.
Well, if they bury it, they'll have to have a swag in on it one time.
Two of their feet will stretch it in.
With the pressure behind it still.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Or they come back, Corey, and start it at on the other side of Valley Road there?
So come to, going toward plant, past Old Valley Road that goes up the hill.
Uh-huh.
They're working in that yard right now, that first house, and then they'll tie in, basically across from the back that comes across.
What about that huge five-foot tile they're putting in there?
Workouts.
Right on the other side of?
Yeah, on the right side of the highway.
Old Valley on the right side going up this side of the area.
So everything's already been replaced to there. I think that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, they're putting in that big five-inch concrete, or five-foot concrete tile right there.
They basically have already replaced the water and sewer pipe up to the creek to about 100 foot on each side, and just, I don't know why this was not in the design, but it would have happened. But I mean, it is, we circle back around and fix it now, again, while the environmental engineers already been done on the project.
So we have $46,000?
We do.
And the water department do it?
Yeah, you've got, I think, $180,000 in water, like, in capital projects for this 2425 budget that you've not used right now. You've got $32,000 in SCADA capital projects for the sewer plants you've not used. I mean, you've got, you took close to $180,000, $200,000 available.
So since this is sewer, don't it have to come out of the sewer side instead of the water side?
Well, I mean, it will, but I mean, you can move your capital projects where you can kind of put your money, or you can move that around, you can move that up into labor accounts if you need it to. So it's all right to move that around. That's a lot different.
Pass it now, pass it, 100 in business.
And how did it get messified if it was exposed?
I don't know, I think that, that design, it might be, I think, I think that might have been 2022. But they're saying it was outside of the scope because when they carried the old bridge down, even the wing walls, that line probably did an opposite thing, throw it outside where the wing walls are. Now, if there was a tear apart, tearing out, I mean, that's a whole different story. But they've already told us that, I mean, it's set right now, it's outside the scope, and they will cover it.
If I'll make a motion, we pay to get it fixed before it gets too late?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Vanhoog. Any further discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Becky Vanhoog?
Yes.
Becky Vanhoog?
Yes.
Anything else, Corey?
The only other thing, the utility manager position, I still got two people I've got to talk to. One of them's here tonight. I'm sorry I've been putting him off. I apologize to him, but we've got to probably wrap that up in the next couple of days. Reminder of the budget workshop, Tuesday, May the 6th at 5:30. And that's all I've got on.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Noah?
How come, Corey, we don't have the other three readers up yet?
So I've been trying to get with SBA Communications, that's who owns the three cell towers around here, and the only response I've got is from a lady in Delaware. And she's put me through to the Atlanta office, and nobody with her emails, calls, anything. Corey May's tried to get ahold of them, GRW's tried to get ahold of them, it's just, we've tried everywhere in the world to get with SBA, and they will not return emails, calls, anything.
Ain't our deadline and have this completed, you do?
So it is, and we've already worked that issue out with the controller and installer. If we close that project out, we've got a MOU to where they come back and finish up those three installs. So we have been working on that where everything gets closed down on time.
So.
So, go ahead.
So I've been trying to get with SBA Communications, that's who owns the three cell towers around here, the only response I've got is from a lady in Delaware. And she's put me through to the, in the office, and nobody with her emails, calls, anything. Corey Mayne's tried to get ahold of them, GRW's tried to get ahold of them, it's just, we've tried everywhere in the world to get with SBA, they will not return emails, calls, anything.
Ain't our deadline and have this completed, you do?
So we, it is, and we've already worked that issue out with the controller and installer. If we close that project out, we've got a MOU to where they come back and finish up those three installs. So we have been working on that where everything gets closed down on time.
So...
So, what, go ahead.
We trying to put them on three cell towers?
Yeah, so I've found two US cellular cell towers, one's on down the opposite side of Hilltop on West Out, or going out past the museum. It's a US cellular, I'm waiting to hear back from them. There's a new, this might be Sprint, it's a different cell provider, that's put a new cell tower up on...
Moral extension.
Moral extension, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. So I've got myself, Corey Mayne, and the engineer in firm, GRW, you're all three trying to round all this up. So if we get the point, you can't get all of these cell towers, I've been looking at purchasing antennas and putting them up before we all in our system.
You just go right, really water system, water meters?
Yeah.
Do they have to be a certain distance apart, or...
No, they don't, but you all where spaced apart where, I mean, they'll pick up...
Maximum coverage.
Max coverage, max coverage for your meters. So we looked at putting one on top of Wind Rock Mountain, what I meant with Wind Rock, we had agreement of, if they're around $250 a month, well, when we got their contract for them, that upped it to $600 a month, so, since I, we're not doing...
Are we using the one out here?
Because right now, you've got a lot of this cell tower right here above town, above Richards.
Yeah, that's my sister's cell tower.
So we had an existing tower, or existing antenna that we were using on that cell tower, so we just replaced that for a metering antenna.
So that, so that tower is gonna be one up on that?
And it says...
I was gonna say, I know who owns that one, I can help you find somebody else.
But it, I mean, that, that's the one thing with this project that's been such a headache, is get those collector sites and get permission with the, with the cell tower people.
Is the tower, there's a tower not too far out, when you turn to go out toward Morgan County, there's a tower, would that be too far out of our...
It's an SBA tower. So the SBA tower there, the one at the end of Old Herman Highway, the one up there at the end of Old Herman Highway would be a good, because it'd pick up everything downtown here, plus out on Jewel Road. So that's the one we've been trying to push to get, get permission from. We had permission to put a collector site on the antenna that was on the old bridge, but then the Amateur Radio Club got involved with Studio Bridge, and there's probably animosity between those two, and we got caught in the middle of it.
Oh, really?
So we lost, yeah.
So we lost, cause that?
Yeah. So it's, it's been...
We need four, right? No, we need, we need four.
We need three.
Three.
Yeah, we need three now.
Anything else, Mr. Noah? Most of it's all I got this time. Thanks, sir. Mr. Bass?
I have one at this time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Bailey?
I have one at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Ms. Van Hughey?
He's already answered my question.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hall?
The billing changes and all that other stuff doesn't change anything yet, but...
So, Deborah's trying to be getting email addresses from as many customers as you can, that way we could set up, the people will get the email billing, and they'll still receive a card bill if they want to. If they just want the email billing, that's the way we set it up. The new phone system, when it goes in, we'll be able to send out bulk mass text for when you have, again, your meter disconnect days, and any other messages you wanna send out. So you, with all 2,200 customers, I mean, we can send a message out for CCRs, any type of flushing, for kind of outages, so that, I mean, that'd be pretty big when you get that set up.
Would it be fixed for the, you're about to be late texts and that kind of thing?
So, you, well, what we've done before in the past, the weeks before, we've done the book of meter disconnects. You know, ladies in the office have spent eight or 10 hours on the future, trying to call as many customers as they can, for the ones that have got cell numbers or phone numbers for. A lot of our customers, we don't have any type of contact information for. So, I mean, that, that's kind of an issue there. So everybody that comes in, we've got sheets up there that they fill out, just kinda updates their account information, addresses, mailing addresses, two phone numbers, emails, however they wanna be contacted.
In the last meeting, we discussed grants or something closer about getting those?
So, the ARC grant, that would be for the three or four water line projects here in downtown, we should have that 500,000 available mid-January, July 1st at the latest. Your CDVG stuff, that stuff will be out for another six months.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Ms. Devine?
I have one at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. No old business, no new business? Correct, Corey.
Correct.
Motion to adjourn.
It's gonna move, it's gonna move, on paper, say aye?
Call Oliver Springs Town Council for maybe the first order. Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Here.
Jeff Bass?
Here.
Charlie Bailey?
Here.
Trish Van Hughey?
Here.
Terry Hall?
Here.
Becky Devine?
Yep.
All right, everybody please stand, and also today is the National Day of Prayer, and Mr. Joe is gonna give us a short devotion.
I'm gonna sit down for that.
Yeah, every, I tell you what, everybody else has to say first.
I wanna sit down.
Joking, joking'd be a little long-winded.
Yeah. This is the National Day of Prayer, and there was a ceremony at the courthouse in Clinton, of which I was aware, and I know that the federal government and its several offices had a ceremony, and I was asked to have a brief devotion and a prayer here in this small portion of our city government. And what I thought I would do would be review a little bit about the Christian Foundings of America and the prayer that our founding fathers went through. We're gonna look at the Mayfire Compact in 1620, and the Mayfire Compact, it calls, "In the name of God, amen," and I'm quoting, "We the names that undersigned, having undertaken for the glory of God in advancement of the Christian faith, do by these presents." Now, this was their charter that they were going to enact as a government, solemnly and mutually in the presence of God and of one another, covenant and combine ourselves together in a holy body politic for our better ordering and preservation. And when you look at this, they believed that God had ordained their venture, and they were advancing the Christian faith, and they believed their political power came from the people under God. And if you read the Mayfire Compact and the Declaration of Independence in the United States Constitution, a lot of the themes in this Mayfire Compact are contained in those. Now we're gonna look and go 100 years or so after, and first Continental Congress assembled in Philadelphia in September of 1774. John Jay of New York and Edward Weatherledge of South Carolina, there was discussion about opening the, the convention in prayer. Of course, there was a great diversity of denominations present, and Samuel Adams said, quote, "I am no bigot. I can hear a prayer from any man of piety and virtue who is of the same time a friend to his country." Today's English, he said, "I don't care what church he's from, if he's a good Christian and a patriot, I'll join him in his prayer." Now, today, prayer in government is politically incorrect, and there's been court cases ruling in various directions and so on, but if you read the history of America, it was founded and interwoven with the true living God of the Bible and in the prayer. The next day, September 7th, 1774, was the first day that that Congress opened in prayer, and that has continued in every congressional session since that time. I had the blessing of serving as a page in Washington DC in July of 1970, and they opened in prayer, and the Senate and the House both have a chaplain. And for the life of me, I cannot understand why, if Congress can have paid chaplains on their staff to pray, why this council and the various commissions and other general assemblies throughout the state could not have prayer? Because I think if the Supreme Court of the United States says we can't have prayer, they need to tell Congress they can't have prayer. Now, if you look at our Declaration of Independence, God is mentioned about six or seven different times. It's not mentioned in our Constitution, but the United States Supreme Court, now this is the United States Supreme Court in 1897, said, "It's always safe to read the letter of the Constitution in the spirit of the Declaration of Independence." So there is judicial authority of the United States Supreme Court that supports the concepts of the true and living God of the Bible being in the hearts of the people who serve in government. The purpose of the First Amendment to the Federal Constitution was to keep government from telling various churches what to believe, not to prevent the precepts of the Bible from being hidden in the hearts of the folks in government, where they bring those precepts before them as they legislate. Now, looking at the Constitutional Convention in 1789, they ran into a problem between the big states of high populations and the small states with less population, and there was a great compromise which resulted in the House being by population and the Senate being two senators per state. A lot of people don't realize this, but Ben Franklin, who was probably not the best person around in terms of his Christian background, he said that, and he had a lot to say, but I'll summarize it, he said that, "We have been assured that in the sacred writings," that is the Bible, "that, quote, 'Except the Lord build the house, thus labor in vain that build it.'" That's Psalms 127, verse 1. And Franklin said, "Let's have prayer in order to eliminate, in order to work around this roadblock between the states with great populations and the states with small populations." Then, as of now, there was some question, 'cause they didn't want to offend anybody, had different denominations and whatnot, and so they compromised and requested that a sermon be preached at the request of the convention on the Fourth of July, which obviously was the anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, and since forth prayers be used in our convention every morning. Ben Franklin agreed with that, and that was carried out. And on July 2nd, when the, when the delegates met, much of the acrimony and difficulty was gone. There was a spirit of conciliation that had been cultivated. So you can say that America began as a result of a prayer meeting in Philadelphia, and Dr. Ben Franklin's call for a prayer that did play a critical role in reminding the delegates of a critical time, without God's help, all their efforts would be in vain. Now, as a personal note, when I first became a recorder in 1985, we didn't open the meetings in prayer. And I read some of the old minutes and some other research I was doing, not related to prayer, and I saw that many of our older council meetings in the 40s and 50s had been opened in prayer. So I suggested to the then-mayor justice that we get retired Reverend Bass to be our chaplain, and he opened our meetings in prayer, and of course, he grew older and couldn't come to meetings, and we have continued opening the meetings in prayer. And I personally could see that all those differences didn't go away, there was a much better spirit in terms of the debate, a much better atmosphere in which we accomplished things. Now I'm gonna conclude by reading 1 Timothy, chapter 2, with the first three verses. Paul writes and says, "I urge, first of all, that requests and prayers and intercessions and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority." And we don't have kings here today, but these folks are in authority here in Oliver Springs, they're the town council. So the Bible says that we should have these prayers and intercessions and thanksgivings for those people in authority. Why? That we may live peaceful lives and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of truth.
Yes.
So with that in mind, I will open our meeting in prayer. Our Father, we thank you for our heritage and the many, many men and women who came before us for hundreds of years ago, that chose to seek you and seek your wisdom and hide your wisdom in their hearts, that it would be a light unto their path and a lamp unto their feet, where they would not sin against you, and at the same time, they could lead the government and lead the people, make decisions in such a way as to honor you and bring honor and glory to you. We pray for these men and women here tonight, as they deliberate, not only tonight, but in other times coming up in the future, that you would continue to give them wisdom, but more importantly, we pray that each would seek you, to join you in your work and invite you into their hearts, and hide your words of wisdom in their hearts, that they might not sin against you, and that they might use your wisdom and your words to light their path as they make decisions in their capacity here as council. We ask you all these things in thy son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Joe. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Joe, appreciate that. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from April 3rd?
Make a motion.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, for Miss Van Hughey. Any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Pass.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Ass.
Trish Van Hughey?
Yes.
Terry Hall?
Yes.
Becky Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. This time, any delegation from citizens? If so, come forward, state your name and your address. Nobody at this time. Mayor update, real quick, flowers and flag. I know we have talked about the flowers, just one, one last real quick shout out. A lot of compliments, a, I mean, a lot of compliments, so to everybody involved, David, Rusty, Becky, myself, Rong County Sheriff's Department, I mean, your husband, your son, your brother-in-law, I mean, there was a list of people, so thank you for everybody that helped make a vision a reality. The flag on the highway, people are really starting to notice, and when wind's blowing, that thing is just beautiful, right? I mean, so again, thank you to Max Martin, to Tennessee Metalizing, to Crace Concrete, Sorc CNC Concrete for providing that, and, you know, we raise it, my crew, we help raise it, and, you know, so that's something that we can spotlight in our town, right? And speaking of spotlight on our town, we'll be launching a new series, hopefully in one to two weeks. We were doing some video on last night, Rusty called us in the act, and so we have a gentleman who will be putting together a series for us, and we're very excited about that, so, at, at no cost to the city.
That be on Facebook or...
It will, it will be on Facebook, we'll share it on social media. Again, no cost to the city, it's just something that I graciously wanted to do, and so I putted the bill for it. So, with that being said, Sports Animal, Sports Talk Radio 99.1 will be here in town next week at City Hawk for four hours to broadcast, again, at no charge to the city, so just really kind of being a spotlight for our town. Sports Animal is widely listened to across the board, and so just, you know, I love my town, and I want to, any chance I get, promote it, right? So, excited about that. Real quick, $15,000 check from Rong County, County Commission, was received, what was that, two weeks ago, a week ago, week and a half ago? So we just wanna say thank you to Wade Crebswell and to Rong County Commission for the $15,000 that we will put towards the project here in town.
Was it for a grant?
No, not, not a grant, it's just if you have a project, and what we're hoping to do, what we're planning to do is make a sidewalk in front of where the old high school was, on our Kingston Avenue, and run it to as far down towards Arrowhead Park as we can. That's the initial game plan for that money that they give, give us. So, and the last thing is, for the third year in a row, we have all of it maxed out our T-Dot, $39,300 allotment that they give us, and that's exciting to me, because the previous years prior to that, we had only averaged to like eight or nine thousand dollars of the 39,000. And so, you know, Rusty has worked diligently... And so, you know, Rusty has worked diligently on getting invoices turned in, Corey and Wendy. And so, you know, we don't want to leave twenty thousand dollars on the table, or thirty thousand dollars on the table, because we have a financial responsibility to every citizen that we maximize what the state gives us. And so we have done that three years in a row, and I'm very proud of that. So all that being said, Corey, I'll shut up and you take it over.
So one thing I'd put in the packet, I know back in January, we started talking about going through the charters, any changes that anybody wanted to make. So I just had included your charter. You'll start going through that. We'll probably have a workshop scheduled for end of week, probably September. So when you get time, start going through that, working that one out. Second thing, there are a couple openings on the Planning Commission. And these are appointed by the mayor. And the mayor, myself, have met with Maurice Walker. Maurice Walker has expressed interest in serving on the Planning Commission. We've got Mr. Walker here tonight. If I have any questions for him, I kind of recommend if that's, if that's the mayor's will, that we add Mr. Walker to the Planning Commission.
It is, and I affirm that. So we'll see you at the next meeting, sir. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. The other thing, we're paving. J.B. Asphalt will be on site May the sixth, so get a lot going next Tuesday to start with a lot of the water cuts that we've talked about the past couple of meetings, the intersection of Wood Drive, Oliver Drive. There will be about a five hundred foot section on Wind Rock Road before you start up the hill. We've had a lot of complaints from that area. So that'll be on site starting May the sixth. The Arrowhead Park, Army Corps Engineer Flood Lane Study, still no update on that, which they did tell us that would probably be about six months where you did hear back from the parking issues at Arrowhead Park. Our forest director has had a contractor come down, cut some of the topsoil off, working, I guess, to resolve the drainage issues, when you had a lot of rains and the flooding. So we've cut the topsoil back. That topsoil is over at the garage, and we are using that to dress up people's yards. So there's a section squared off down there that we've talked about filling in with gravel, trying to make that, maybe some additional parking. So we'll try that out, see how that works, and we may expand that on if it does work out fine. The traffic studies, Chief Laxton will go over those during his time. And a reminder that Tuesday, May the sixth, five-thirty is our budget workshop. And that's all I have at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Dinkins. Mr. Miller.
Yes, sir. We talked about Airport Road and paving. Project group's done left there. And I talked to Ramona, and we had enough in State Street that we could have, we could have probably done three hundred foot of that.
Corey. So I met with Kelly McCart, and it was, I think it was Monday, no, it was last Friday that we finally got together, and he's supposed to give me a quote on paving all out there. And we began talking when they first moved the equipment in out there about, let us provide it, I mean, a couple of truckloads of asphalt, let them go as far as they could while they had their equipment set up. And it was last Friday before I got him, and got him in the truck out there looking at everything. So that's not ruled out yet. Now, it would have been ideal to do that while they were kind of mobilized out there.
Yeah, because all they would have done was start directly into the bridge and come right on this way with it, with their equipment, so.
So we initiated that conversation back when, maybe it might have been Rusty or the mayor saw the equipment moving in out there. Well, like I said, it was, you know, last Friday before I, you know, got in touch and got Kelly in the truck, or actually, I was in with them. So that one's not totally out yet.
Okay. I've got a question, Mayor, you may or may not. Who owns the Boys' and Girls' Club in Norwood?
We do. The town of Oliver Springs, and we listen to.
We have a deed.
We do.
We do have a deed for that piece.
Mr. Mayor, I researched that many years ago, several times, and the town owns the property, but the Boys' Club, from recollection, has a ninety-nine-year lease.
Yeah, they're supposed to pay a dollar a year, and they did not pay, and as petty as this is, they've not paid that dollar in like fifteen years. It's also supposed to have yearly inspections, and I think my first.
Last year?
It was last year we did one. It was egregious.
I was going to ask you about that, because I had had somebody approach me. Years ago, I was involved with the Boys' Club out there for probably eight, nine years. But I've had somebody tell me, we need to go out there and go through that building and look at the shape that it's in.
Oh, it is beyond ADA, ADA compliance means nothing to that, to that building.
So who do we hold responsible for that? The Board of Directors up there?
Laxton, Corey. So two thousand twenty-four, there was an inspection done. I wasn't not in on it. I'm not sure who was. I don't know if it was Chief or Mayor. Me, Finn. Me and Matt. Matt might have still been here, too. They were giving. Matt? Yeah. Yeah, he was the one who did the inspection. So they were giving a list of things to address and fix in that building. Now, a couple other council members who expressed interest in going out there, going through when we do the next inspection. So there's a lot of moving pieces on there right now. Okay. But, and I'll just go ahead and say it'll conform, I would like to get it on the books with Rome County Inspector. And with Eric Keltler. Yes, yes. Get Glenn, and then anybody on this council who wants to go, we just need to show up. And this time, the list needs to be compliant on. So we'll try to schedule that within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll be in on that.
Yeah, there's a lot of conversations been had the past probably month over this time.
It's been all downhill since probably I've been passed away. Yeah. Yeah, I heard it's been pretty rough shape on the.
So do we know who's in charge of it at the building now?
The Board of Directors, they appoint a director out there.
To be hon, I don't know who the director is.
I think it's Rick Bailey.
Okay, I was wondering if it was still Rick, or if, I know, yeah, I knew it used to be.
Yeah, I think he's still.
So I know that they shut down their after-school program, I mean, safety hazard.
Well, I heard there's some issues on the ball fields, too.
Perhaps they would vote to surrender the lease, or the town could take it back over. That might be an option. They might not want to do that, but that could be an option.
They'd lose their United Way fund.
They already have.
Oh, have they?
Oh, yeah.
Also lost their tax exempt status, too.
Ed Kelly built it years ago at no cost and got a lease, I think, from maybe Mayor Sisson at the time. I can't remember, it's a long time ago. And Ed kept it up, and I'll say ran it, had folks that helped him with it. And of course, this is the first time I've known it's not been in good shape, but it may take a lot of money to bring it into compliance with the building codes. And, you know, that would be a decision that the management of the Boys' Club would have to make.
I think it's a conversation that's worth having. I think the county.
But if it's dangerous for the kids or whoever uses it up there, then that's, see, that's some liability for them, I suppose. And, you know, that's going to be taken into consideration, too.
I will say that, who said something about the ball fields? Yeah, so I do know that I had to get involved probably six months ago or so. One of the light poles fell. It literally fell. And another one was about to fall, and Anderson County did address that situation rather immediately, but as I got blew up, like, hey, this is OS City, like, no, that's Anderson County.
Yeah, that's county.
So, all right, anything else, Mr. Miller?
I think that's all I've got this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bass.
How is the cleanup, or is people responding pretty good to that?
They have. I know I let Rusty kind of take this over in just a second, but I know we have, I think we've taken off maybe five or six dumpster loads.
We've got eight dumpster loads and seventeen loads of brush.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. Everybody's getting addressed, that's good.
People are really abusive this year.
So that does bring up one thing that I said now. So we probably need to address kind of more detailed list of what can be put out, and the amount of stuff. I know there's been some contractors that have cut some trees down, left them laying kind of close to the road, and thinking we were going to.
They did that for a reason, and they surely have.
Yeah. Yeah. So we probably need to get them for a detailed stringent list. So they're still working on the thought holes. So, J.B., yes, J.B. Asphalt will be here. I got that confirmation this morning. They were there one start next Tuesday for the cutouts. Yes. Yeah. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Ms. Bailey.
The only thing I have is the library's doing some reading program that they've already been talking about, but we are doing a kid golf party on May thirty-first. We'll have some flyers to pass out probably tomorrow. But the police department's going to have their game trailer there, we'll have a bounce house and stuff. So she's got a lot of really cool stuff planned for every day of the summer, so it's going to be really cool for the kids.
What was that date again?
May thirty-first.
And what was the time?
I think we're doing it from five to seven. And then she's got something planned for every day, Monday through Friday, at the library from like twelve to six, so during the summer, so it'd be really good.
They'll also send me a bus at the library from eleven thirty to twelve during the summer for the kids to have something to eat.
Awesome.
Sweet. I'm going to tell you right now, we need to, we need to have a fundraiser, we need to find some money for the library. No, no pressure. I'm sorry.
Anything else, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, no, listen.
Ms. Van Hooft.
I wanted to ask, Corey, where we are with regard to our current audit process?
So, we had a conference call with Terry Moes, our auditor, and Dennis Green, our accountant, on May, April the seventeenth. So Terry Moes, in the past, they've had maybe eight to ten field visits for the site work here. Everything's going through a server now, where everything's supposed to be submitted online to them. So most of all, what they're going to do is going to be in-house, or at their office. They will still have two to three-day visits here to do kind of your internal control checks, kind of your interview process. They may want to interview a couple of council members as well, but that's what I'll probably spend four or five hours with them. But they've started back on that. I know the data request went out earlier this week to Ramona and Devers and the Water Office, so we're just getting all information to them. This is probably going to be wrapped up by, probably end of June at the most, or at the latest, hopefully first of June.
When do you think we'll have the report?
That'll probably be by the end of June. Yeah. If they wrap it up, usually, first, second, begin of June, it's usually two weeks before we get the copies and the final, final version.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Van Hooft?
No, for the phone.
Thank you. Mr. Holland.
I'd like to touch on the spring cleanup. Does it go till noon tomorrow?
Yes.
So would it be a good idea from the call to city and say, I put something out, let's get a lot.
Absolutely. I wish they would do that anyway. Now, you will have some stragglers that'll put stuff out late, and to some degree, you will still pick some of the stuff up.
We can, myself, it's going to go out at twelve o'clock tomorrow, drive everywhere in town, and write down everything that's still out, because we always get somebody the next week, so then we've had it up for a month.
Yeah. I might be guilty of that. She's making lists. I did notice on Spring Street, it looked like an airplane crashed at one house. I don't, I guess you passed it up, that where they just stole stuff all in the yard. I mean, it's, you know, it's one that we keep telling the molder yard.
Right up from the post office?
Correct.
Yeah, they called in today, they've got to move it up next to the road.
Yeah, it's.
And I'm like three quarters of the way in their yard.
Right. That's why I said airplane crash. High school cleanup, I had to brag on the contractor, they say Kingston Dunn's real good, I don't count on the world to get that bad. They actually did the dirt thing, and a water truck came and sprayed that up, too, so they had to kind of apologize for a few masks, I guess. Home planning, we've had two, we didn't have nothing on the agenda. It's a way that we can kind of push to add a, could they inherit a short-term rental project? Maybe kind of start a good list, and maybe give, Rome County had to get more bank or above for those things. And also, I kind of noticed we need a little bit more tiny home language, kind of beefing that up a bit, too, it's kind of weak. And this last, had to brag on the mayor for cleaning up the cross, too.
Yeah, that looks good.
He actually called me, I had to dial him in, so he could see it, get it from the funeral. Thank you, Terry. All right. And to kind of piggyback off that, I know I made a Facebook post about it, but, you know, not everybody has Facebook, not everybody sees it. For twelve or thirteen years, I had cleared the cross off, but I didn't do it. Like, only a handful of people knew that I did it. Like, I didn't, it wasn't something that I wanted public notoriety for. And so I really do say thank you for you and Wesley Lee kind of bringing that to light, because I do, I do love my town, and I want people to, we don't have a lot, but what we do have, we need to showcase, right? And that cross is a showcase. It's been there, like, since the sixties. Is that right, Joe?
When I was probably a third grader, Don Pete was the pastor, first Baptist, and
he and the deacons. I think G.A. Meade Senior and his wife owned that hillside, and they agreed to build the cross, and they started constructing it to the path up there. And I would run home from school, and I got up at three-thirty, and grab tools and run up and help them, but I suspect I got more in their way than helping them. But I'm probably one of the few people alive that helped put that up there.
Wow. Mr. Walker?
I helped dig the steps when I was in the Boy Scouts. When that, before the cross was put up, I was about thirteen or fourteen years old, and I'll be seventy-five June the first, so it's been a while.
Wow.
But if I'm not mistaken, the Methodist Church, and I think First Baptist Church, were the two main, and I may be a way off place here, but I think that was the two main churches that was involved in putting the cross, the first cross up there. It's been replaced, I think, two or three times.
Yeah. And somebody put some lights up there, had solar lights.
Yeah. So somebody anonymously has done that, and the mayor is trying to figure it out. So if you know, you feel free to tell me, because I'd love to thank them for doing that. So.
They knew what they were doing, and they did.
It's been only a year. It sure has. Yep, for sure. So.
That's Terry, how'd they get it up there?
If you've been up there, it's pretty extensive system, so, I mean, it had to have been carried by, I would say, multiple people, to be honest.
Oh, yeah, it's still getting up there.
Yeah, so getting up's easy. Coming down, dawg.
You're all the way up.
We get to be treeing the way.
All right, Ms. Van Hooft?
No, nothing is done.
Thank you so much. Chief Laxton.
Just quick questions, anything on the codes update? Any questions?
One question.
Yes?
I asked Heather a couple months ago, I think she talked to you about it. Any update on the two burned houses on the hay? They're still sitting there just like they were.
Yeah, so.
Six months ago.
There has been another little change in Glenn Cooper's office, where still a few weeks on hold with that situation. I know that there were some insurance companies fighting back and forth of whose problem it was based on where the car started, because neither house had the fire start in their location, it started in the garage. And so where it split, I think it's still kind of fighting out in court between the two insurance companies. That being said, because it's. That being said, because it's part of their insurance investigations, no demolition has been allowed yet until it, you know, has resolution.
Let's say.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the next thing is on your speed studies with the four knees, basically through request of council. Uh, the only one that I know of that has any kind of backing to it is the one that I gave you first on Richard's Drive. Is there any questions on how y'all want us to move forward? Is it something you want to approve, look at? Do you want to talk about in budget committee? Cory?
So the one outlier that I do not have yet, we talked about having a table company come over and pave the speed tables. So the quote that P R I gave me contained, there was no itemized quote. So I've asked J B S Hall in early year next week, let's look at kind of the size we want, where we want them, and I'll have a price from J B S Hall as far as paving the speed tables.
And so basically the question I posed to council is, is the process for a speed table to be placed in location is, one, we start with a request from citizens. It goes to petition. We talk all the property owners. We do the speed study to see if it meets qualifications for it, for our traffic calming study. And then it goes to funding. Only one that has made all those steps so far is Richard's Drive. So is, out of these other three studies, is there any kind of push? Are y'all wanting us to move forward with any of the other streets as well? Or are we just sitting on Richard's Drive at the moment?
On Midway, Chief, you would have to fill a half dozen.
Yes, sir.
That was there.
And I think airport would need at least two on airport, cause it's the long street.
And so the thing is, is to get to that point of bringing it to council. So if airport and Midway is options, then that's where me and Cory would have to step in, talk to the residents, see if they're even for it. Because in the past, the way it's kind of operated, you have a city street, they come to Cory, says, we want it. Here's our signatures for a petition to do it. Cory sends it to me, says, I want a speed study done. I give him the data. This is what it looks like. I have a hard time enforcement because of location, driveways, whatever. And then it comes for funding and it comes for approval. So right now, Midway and Airport, all we have is a speed study. We don't, we've not talked to any of the people out there. Do they even want it? So I guess my question would be, do y'all want us to start working on Midway and Airport and start seeing if those people want it? I, I mean, if they say no, it won't meet our standards to be able to do it.
I think so. I, I think it's safety. I don't know what Robert's off of Midway.
Yeah, always, yeah.
I mean, I have no doubt that's just like airport, everybody's flying down through there. I mean, I saw the numbers.
Well, I can get them there then, Cory, and we'll, uh, we'll look at, you know, the proper locations and then we'll start notifying property owners on those. So from a funding standpoint, those, uh, your traffic calming measures can be paid for out of your state street aid?
I got a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
You saw, and Cory's talking, and I've been over them. You say the only ones they got from the movie theater on the bridge.
Yes.
Those.
Mm-hmm.
That's would be ideal to me because those are just big enough to get your attention and slow you down. Does that meet the, the codes and specs?
No. So what happens is, is for whatever speed limit y'all have set for that road is what inch rise we can do. So if your speed limit is over 25 mile an hour, we can only have a three and a half inch rise. So if you're under 25 mile an hour, we can go up to a four inch rise. To go to their rise, you gotta be a five mile an hour speed zone.
Oh, really?
Yes. Cause that is a significant.
Yeah, it gets you.
So if you get that more than five mile an hour, so say I'm legally operating my motor vehicle 20 mile an hour and I hit one like at the movie theater and get damaged my car, reliable.
Oh, really?
Yes. You have to be able to safely hit that at the speed limit and not cause damage to your vehicle.
So Midway's 25, so.
The one that Normalwood Valley could get would be the three and a half inch rise. Now, if you as a governing body decide to lower the speed limit, then, you know, we could look at putting a larger rise in, but that would be the only way.
I, I will say, uh, the ones on Normalwood Drive, they'll get your attention.
Yeah, they do.
They will get your attention. Like, do you go over them too fast? You'll wish you hadn't.
Yeah.
And they're only, what are they, three, three?
Three and a half inch rise. That, that is for the, I guess you'd say that's the smallest for that speed zone.
Their wheels slow you down.
That's right.
I would like to see, I mean, I hate to have to do it. I would rather everybody just didn't drive so fast, but that's, your numbers are pretty important.
Yes.
Just from putting cameras up there. You know that people are really, you know, flying through there. And I just don't want to see somebody get hurt.
Well, we will, and, and of course, I, I guess the first question is, uh, Richard's Drive, do we wait until the budget committee and start talking about funding it? Or y'all want to move forward as looking at buying it? Or you want to look at the asphalt bids?
asphalt bids, I was, I was just guessing last time, was having asphalt.
Compared to the. And so then move forward with Midway and Airport, looking at that and talking to property owners.
Yeah.
And if anybody on council has a road that they want identified, just let myself, Laxton, Chief know and we'll set it up and, you know, get some numbers. So.
Is it bad down here too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we've put up the speed travel this week for a lot of, you know, businesses and opening for the season. And literally you can sit there and watch the lights going off 24/7 and so, you know, and, and this is what I explained to you and this is why it was such a great idea for Normalwood Drive. So right now, we have issues on airport. We have issues on Midway. Uh, we're talking about Main Street. We're also talking about East Britton Street with commercial vehicles. Right now, you have two patrol officers on duty at all times. So we've got, you know, five or six big key areas that I need two people. Uh, so, you know, during the daytime when we have THS overtime and stuff, we try to get them to these areas, but you know, when it comes to trying to need total enforcement in multiple areas like that, you know, kind of poses real difficult. These speed studies, it helps a lot with us. So as soon as I get this data, before y'all even send it, I'm going ahead and sending it up to my officers. Uh, if you've noticed at, at night at Arrowhead Park, we identified from 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM is the hot zone for Arrowhead Park. You will see one of my officers there from 8:00 to 9:00 PM. Uh, from 11:00 to noon right now, you will see them on Richard's Drive. In between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, you will see them on Midway and Airport. That is identified that trying to use our, you know, time wisely, that is when we have problems in that area. And so we're trying to scatter them as quick as we can.
The point is that we just don't have enough officers to, to patrol, you know, for safety. And people can say that we're, we're a speed trap. No, we're not a speed trap. I'm sorry, we're not a speed trap.
When you, when you ever, you know, when we average right now around 100 citations a month for 36,000 cars a day, we're not touching less than 1% of the population that comes through this town.
I get tired of reading about it on Facebook. I'll be honest. I just need to put Facebook up sometimes and forget that because it frustrates me. Because I'm thinking, you don't see the numbers I see.
True.
And they don't. But I know that we're just trying to keep it safe.
True. The last thing I have to before incident, I know I kind of snuck it in last minute. It was signature desk when I came in. We had an issue last week where we had a lady leave the roadway and strike our control block for the red light at Food City. Uh, when she left roadway and hit the concrete foundation, uh, it caused her to go airborne and completely took out the box. And then ended up landing on the side of her vehicle. Uh, we had called out emergency response from the red light people that we use. Uh, Stansel Electric is the one that installed the new red light at Knoxville Highway in the Bullard. They have always gave us the best service and turnaround. They actually, from their crosswalk office, sent us a loaner. It is not costing us a dime right now. They hooked it up within, for about four hours, had everything done, installed in the light back market. Uh, right now, we contacted eight different companies to try and replace that box and get bids. We have only received one back and it was from them. So right now, that's what's named for you. Basically to try and explain the process of their bid is that is them purchasing uh, the traffic control block straight from the manufacturer. So that is their cost. Well, so that is for them to buy it and have it on site. Then they've got to sell it to us and install it. Uh, that being said, installed on site, completely done, everything operational is $23,000. Now, I understand this was part of a crash. The person that owned the vehicle did have insurance. Claims are being filed. Insurance companies are working all that out. Cory's headed that up and, you know, got all the ball rolling with it. I'm doing more of the safety, trying to get it back and making it functional. Uh, when I talked to them today, they want to know how to proceed. I said, let me take it to council tonight and ask them, are we going to wait and try and see if y'all want to take any more bids? Or are you safe with going forward, uh, with this company? Uh, they are the one that won a state bid to do the red light and they're the only ones that's returned a bid to me.
How many others did you attend?
Eight.
Think about the state bid, you might have put it on bids then.
Cory said the same thing, but I think the way it worked was they bided that project. I don't think they have a state bid for red lights. I think they have the contract to do the Knoxville red light, Knoxville Highway red light when they done it.
Well, if this is, uh, I'll say an emergency situation, you can waive the bidding.
It is. I, I don't know. I know that my office has received three complaints this week. I know Cory has received a lot more. So if you're coming up from UPS on Hill Drive facing Food City, that loop is out. So it will never turn green for you.
Oh.
We have went out there ourselves. We have called them back. There is a break in the wire because literally it was ripped out by a motor vehicle hitting it. So something's messed up somewhere. They say it's not worth fixing just yet because they keep coming out and they cannot find the issue. It could be wires underground, but when we get a box in, we know all the equipment inside the box is not destroyed. Then they can start trying to find the issue because it could literally be in, because when they brought the box, they took our goods and put it in. So it could be something broken.
Will they, if we give them $23,000, will they put the pavement, I mean, put the wiring in the pavement to help the change?
Yeah, $23,000 gets the box installed and everything operational from what I was told. And of course, we will be reimbursed by insurance companies as long as they, you know, do as like most crashes unless we end up having to seek an attorney and so on, but general practice, there'll be a claim filed and insurance will reimburse us for this.
Mayor, I don't want you to worry, but Rockwood just spent $37,000 for a box downtown this past Monday night, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
There you go.
I'll make the motion when you count. Southern Liding Traffic System installed the new black.
Motion by Mr. Bass. Do we have a second?
Well, Southern is the company that is selling to Stansel Electric. If you'll notice on their, uh, Stansel Electric is the company buying, that is the wholesaler of the malls.
Yeah, they're the customer.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a real good deal.
Stansel Electric, Captain.
So Stansel would be the one.
Installed.
Installed.
For $23,000.
Correct.
Did he call Becky, tell them to stop that other one?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Bass. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion?
They should be familiar from previous problems too, shouldn't they?
Yes, so generally the way we've done it in the past, and this is what I was trained to, the Knoxville Highway red light, once it was installed, was under warranty. T-Dot referred us to use Stansel Electric because it's under warranty. All the other red lights was maintained by Progressive Electric out of Knoxville. I've even spoke to Mr. Miller about it. However, as we started having issues at the East End Red Light and the one at Food City, I was well unanswered days, weeks, months, um, after years on some calls that I've left. And we ended up calling Stansel Electric emergency situations. They've now been doing all of our red lights. Every time I've called them, they've been here within an hour and a half. You know, they're based out of Cross School. I think most of their guys work either out in Knoxville or Athens. And they get here really quick, emergency notice. They've been amazing to do it.
It's always been good. The people, they have good records and know what happened last time.
Alright, any further discussion?
Do we have the $23,000 in budget right now? We can, there's spins on this?
Yes.
If it's going to be reimbursed for insurance, you might pull out a state street aid fund.
That would be up to us. Yes, I don't know.
Is that where you're thinking about getting it?
We can do it either or. I mean, the ideal thing would be to pull it out of state street aid.
How much have we got in there right now?
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and fifty.
And you've actually got a capital project. For 2024, you can pull it out of, you can pull out of repairs, but. But that, that would be the first choice, Mr. Bailey.
Which maybe we get the money in the fall and it would be in the next year's budget. So I mean, you just have to.
What's the timeline they're looking at, Chief?
They said that this box that they pulled us, they can have on site in two weeks.
Here on site?
Yeah.
Motion, second. Discussion. Throw a call, Joe.
Frogger Melder.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Chris Van Henn.
Yes.
Harry Holland.
Yes.
Becky Devaney.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Bailey, old business, new business. Set a date for budget workshop.
So your budget workshop is already set for next Tuesday, May 6th, 5:30 PM.
Do, do we need a second, uh, second date?
Cory?
No, we don't.
Not, not at this time.
I don't think so. Okay. Alright, motion to adjourn. So move. All in favor of saying yes?
Uh, no.
You want to oppose?